December 24th. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Any comment? Any objections? All in favor? Second order business is review and approval of December 8th minutes, 2014. Got a motion for approval? I'll second it then. Any comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next order of business is public hearing, conceptual reviews and briefings. LP Builders, I understand, has requested, can we extend the public hearing to January 12th? It was continued to January 12th. They will have to have it extended to February 9th. Does anybody here have any comment for LP Builders project? No?
I have a comment.
Okay.
I have a quick item that I wonder if it is going to be extended. This could be relevant for the next meeting. So the ENCB sent around a report that they made based on their application. And I never understand, and I just wanted to kind of talk about with the board. We have this policy where the ENCB doesn't come to the meetings and advise us here, and they're not generally allowed to like speak on an application. And I don't get why, if they're an advisory board, that are, you know, they're a town board that is invested with advisory power, why we can't have members of ENCB here to discuss application with us, since that's their entire purpose of existing. It's something I've never got. And, you know, I emailed the ENCB and said, can you come to our meetings since we're going to be discussing this application and since you sent this whole report about it? And they said, yeah, we can come, but we're generally not allowed to speak at the meetings. And why? Just throwing that out there.
I'm not aware there's a policy. I think there's a practice.
I mean, I've seen it happen multiple times where, you know, but they're not members of the public. They're a board that's invested to advise us. So it seems like maybe we should change our policy, if it's a policy, but not, you know, if it's an unofficial policy.
Well, you should make a policy.
Yeah.
For C4. Because I, in my experience, they have generally not, generally they haven't given such notice for a long time.
Yeah, I feel like there's like always like miscommunications or, it just seems like not a very well functioning system.
There would be beneficial to have a discussion about how the two boards and work.
Yeah.
Collectively.
Well, maybe we can discuss that for our workshop items for upcoming workshop meetings.
Great question.
Okay. So, all right, well, yeah, so, okay, maybe we'll talk about that then.
All right.
Great.
I'll put it down. Anybody else? Comments? Do we have a motion to, well, I didn't have a motion to open the public hearing, so I guess we have to open the public hearing. I thought it was already open, but, motion to open the public hearing on LP Builders.
Sure.
Okay. Any comments? No? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Okay, so we have a motion to open the public hearing. There's no public comments right at this point. We'll keep it open during the evening. And is there a motion to continue public hearing until February 9th as per their request?
Sure. I'll make the motion.
Second? Second?
Good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We usually have a time for a public comment on any issues that anybody has. Would anybody like to make a public comment right now?
I'm in Stockton-Hysper, I live through the village. During the December 18th town board meeting, Jeff Logan said he's met with developers regarding the proposed waste water treatment plant on the properties to the south and adjacent to the high school. Logan explained, I remember developers was on the way down to the planning board. There does not appear to be any discussions about the waste water treatment plants south at the high school on any planning board agendas for the past few years. Did other members of the planning board attend these meetings with Logan? And were Logan's discussions with developers ever discussed with other members of the
For the application review tonight, we have, while during night.
Good evening, everyone. Jennifer Van Tile and Ross Ringlitz. As most of you remember, we had our final scoping document approved last September. And since that time, we've been hard at work in preparing the DEIS, which will then be submitted to this board for review and which will be followed by a public hearing process. So we're here tonight just to give you one of what will probably be several updates about the preparation of the DEIS to check in with you, so you know that we haven't forgotten about this. We're hard at work in preparing the document. But since the time of the adoption of the final scope, we've had meetings with the ENCB apropos of your comment. And they've made suggestions to us about ways of limiting impervious on the site. And I think that the board will recall that that was an issue that you raised as an issue of concern in the scoping, that we were looking at a number of alternatives to limit impervious on the site, dealing with the height of the buildings, et cetera. So Ross would just like to report to the board where we are in a couple of these items. And we're not going to ask you tonight to make any decisions, of course. That would, your board will only make decisions after the full public hearing process has been followed. But we're just advising you of some of the issues that we are considering in the DEIS, so you'll be aware of them when we do submit the draft for your consideration.
Good evening, Ross Ringlitz with Engineering Properties. As Jennifer said, this is probably one of many meetings that we're going to have, especially as we get closer to submitting this document, there's going to be information we're going to want to communicate to you as it gets closer and feedback we may want to get from you as it gets closer. So thank you for having us out tonight. As Jennifer mentioned, that the ENCB, there was a comment was put up regarding impervious area and ways to eliminate impervious area. And we've been working with Steve, trying to finalize this site plan, so that we can do a lot more engineering on this plan as part of the information that we need to bring to you in the draft of our environmental impact statement. As part of that, Steve's been talking about burbs around the property and landscaping, screening between the properties. And it kind of came together a little bit with the open space comment and reducing the impervious area. And one of the comments was, is can we, the driveway is exactly parallel in Parity's lane, and can we eliminate that? We took a look at that. From our perspective, we think it works because it creates more green space in front of the building and a better buffer to the properties on Parity's lane. As part of that, we would propose to improve Parity's lane. We're not proposing to come in and use Parity's as it is. One of the ideas that we talked about and we're exploring is to improve Parity's lane from the traffic circle. And we may even be able to eliminate that traffic circle. The primary reason for that was because of the three driveways that were off of it as you came into it, in order to provide a more efficient means of traffic circulation. If we eliminated that, we could potentially eliminate the traffic circle, improve Parity's out, and basically just connect back into the existing road system within the project. So that's one of the things that we're exploring as part of finalizing the site plan. The other item is the hotel height. And it's actually one of the alternatives in this scoping document that talks about a five-story alternative. There's a little while on the plan here that represents the hotel wing. It's only the hotel wing that we're talking about, it's not the rest of the building. Where if we went to five stories instead of four stories, we could reduce the length of the hotel in the pervious area. We were unsure about how we did that initially. As Steve explores the architecture, I think he likes the idea better. It is an alternative that we're going to discuss. We're probably going to more fully develop that alternative, so you can compare, contrast the two, the four-story and the five-story. Originally, we were just going to do the viewshed analysis on the four-story, but I think we do this development or detail on the five-story, so that we can take a look at that as a realistic alternative, because it's something we would like to look at. We have met with, also with the county planning, as an update to them, and we went last week.
Last Thursday.
Yep, last Thursday, we went, yep. And they like the idea of reducing impervious and improving Parity's lane. It improves the business opportunities for those people, reduces traffic, reduces impervious. So we got some initial feedback from them on the concept as well.
But again, we're not asking that any decisions be made on that alternative tonight. Obviously, the details would have to be studied, what would be the improvements to Parity's? How does that, how does that compare in terms of traffic circulation with other alternatives? And all that information would be brought before you. And certainly, we believe this would be a matter of some public interest, that the public is going to want to comment on it too. We just wanted to make the board aware, as we had these meetings with outside agencies, which are an authorized part of developing an EIS. When suggestions were made that we thought were helpful, we've started to expand, if you will, the depth of the analysis in the DEIS to look at some of these other alternatives. So we just wanted you to be up to speed that they were going to be discussed in the document. As, together with all of the alternatives that are already in the scoping.
Just another update, that we've scaled back the tennis center from the original proposal, so that's the other changes on the plan that we're looking at, is reducing that because of wetland areas, buffers. We want to improve that area of that way, so it's more environmentally sensitive than initially thought. So that's been scaled back slightly from the original plan.
Is it less tennis courts or what, what's the difference?
Pardon me?
What's the difference between the two? Is it less tennis courts?
Yes, a lot less tennis courts.
Well, what's the height of the five-story building? If it is, what's the proposed height?
The height of the five-story building? It's going to be different on different sides, actually.
The maximum?
Because the maximum height of the five-story building on the building would be 14 foot floor height.
Good question, yes.
That might not have actually been finalized.
Yeah, I was asking.
I don't know the word.
That was a good guess. 70 feet?
60 to 70.
70. With the gable?
60, 60 to 70 feet, I'm going to guess, is the height. A lot of that is diminished here because this is actually, this first floor is this elevation, and this is 12 foot higher in this elevation. So effectively, from this view, should be lower. And something we'll show you in the viewshed analysis.
How much square footage are you talking about?
I'm sorry, I don't.
The square footage of the footprint, trading for the story, additional story, how much, how much are you talking about?
How much? Was 60 feet, Steve, that we reduced it by?
60 by?
By 70, from 4,200 feet.
But of course, it's avoiding that disturbance relating to that construction too.
70.
Yep.
Did you consider anything about the parking space, making that more impervious or less impervious?
We are, and then one of the altern, one of the things we need to study in the analysis as part of sustainability is, we talked about potential impervious pavement. It's one of the.
Four times more expensive than normal.
Pardon me?
Four times more expensive than normal, but worth it.
It is, it is more expensive. You know, in the outer, actually parking area, we're going to be at grade, so it's pretty good out there. It makes sense too, from a realistic perspective, because that's the part of the park that's going to be used the least. So have the least amount of traffic out, so that it has an opportunity to, for longevity out there. But that's something we're going to look at.
Apparently, by the way, there's some pervious pavement that's being used at the New York State Store that's at the, one of the park and rides on the Deconic State Parkway. And that's a place that is experiencing quite a lot of traffic. And there, part of the construction was to see how this pervious pavement worked. So we'll be checking on the progress of that and reporting to you. There's different kinds of pervious pavement. They're developing new types as we go along that withstand higher levels of traffic.
Ross, would Parity's lane be, still be owned by the town maintenance?
Yes. Yeah. You know, in fact, you know, in fact, on the original plan, the traffic circle on the exit out was proposed to be public, because we would need to maintain Parity's, people being able to get around and get out on a public road. So this would just still be, be public here.
And it was actually Dennis Doyle at our meeting on Thursday that suggested that if this did happen, again, this is very speculative because we haven't done all the analysis, that it might be better at that point to eliminate the traffic circle. And then you're eliminating that amount of pavement for purposes of construction and maintenance. But we'll be looking at that as we move forward.
Well, right now, Parity's lane, as I recall, has very little traffic on it. Now, you're going to increase that 10 or 100 fold, I guess. You're going to be a major user of that. Is there any problem with the current size of it, the width of it?
We would, as part of the analysis, we would do a look at the size and recommend improvements to it. Steve has said that he would want to upgrade that road, especially visually too, because it's going to be the entrance to his facility. So there would be two types of improvements to that road, structural improvements to the road itself, the width of the road, and then landscaping improvements. And it'll be decided in the next year or so.
Do you have a rough ETA for the DEIS or?
The end of the first quarter, so end of March. Everything goes okay.
So as Ross said, we would expect to be back to talk to you a couple times before then, anyway, to update you on where we are.
Have we had a site visit prior to, like, being on the board?
Every day.
As the planning board, if the planning board has, well.
At my office, so I look at it.
We haven't, and some of us looked at it before when we had the other previous project. But we could certainly schedule a site, because I would recommend waiting as long as possible.
Steve has been out there recently, meeting with the neighbors on Parity's, so he would be glad to reach out there.
As soon as it's a little bit nicer, maybe we can do something.
Have you had any discussion with the neighbors about using Parity's lane as the accessway?
As the park.
Have you had any discussion with the neighbors?
Yes. Actually, Steve met with the neighbors.
Briefly. The whole project, I kind of gave them an overview. The, actually, it was the law firm on the end, actually, and basically, you know, from their point of view, what are they seeing, what are they experiencing, traffic and.
And of course, all that would be analyzed, the level of traffic, what the impact is going to be.
They seem to understand what we're.
I understand that Parity's lane would still be two ways. So people would still come out of there. How would you keep your traffic from coming back out and making a left?
Actually, the neighbors do seem to understand that there is a life sentence on that left turn. It seems that the state police, NIDOT, and Dennis of the county are all pretty eager to see that as a right turn only anyway. So, and the folks on there seem to understand that that is a dangerous intersection.
So the idea, always, even with the traffic circle and the long internal driveway, was to allow public traffic coming out on Parity's to go around that circle and come out, I'll call it our exit, although it was proposed to be dedicated, so that there's a safe way coming out in South Ohioville to return to 299 and make a safe left-hand turn with the benefit of a light. And of course, one of the issues that we've been asked to study by the county is to make sure that there's appropriate stacking length on South Ohioville and a way for people coming out at the entrance closest to 299 and the other entrance to come out safely, to have ability to stack and make safe turning movements to go back to the throughway. So, so there always was proposed to be a benefit for existing users of Parity's lane.
To exit through.
Yes. Yes. Because, as Ross said, that ability to make a left-hand turn is not assured in the long-term future.
Both the county, the county, DPW was there and the DO2 were there, and they both.
Nobody's really keen on making a left.
Yeah, we're happy with the restrictions for running.
And this goes back to the original scoping, this is not something new. So, again, I would emphasize, I don't want anyone to get the impression that, that both alternatives are not going to be fully evaluated, and no rational decision can be made either from our side of which alternative to advocate for. And by this board, certainly, and ultimately the town board, in considering the zoning as to which alternative is better until the full environmental study has been done that evaluates both alternatives. But since this did appear as a clear way to minimize impervious, and was one of the issues that was brought to the fore, not only by this board, but by the ENCB when we met with them, we wanted to advise you as early as possible that this was something that was being considered, because it might, it might end up to be the preferred alternative.
In the DEIS, it'll be the preferred? When you do, when you do your DEIS?
Yes.
Yes, yes. We expect that because of the advantages in limiting impervious, it will be our preferred alternative. But you ultimately will decide this, what is your preferred alternative.
So there's still going to be a left turn into Parity's from the east? So if somebody coming from McKipsy can go into businesses there?
Yes, exactly. Yeah, it wasn't known as previously, and that's going to remain as our proposal. That'll be ultimately under the table if that's our proposal.
And there's still going to be a, at one point, there was discussion about a lane from the throughway? Did you take a lane?
Yeah, and as the scope of our traffic consultant there, exploring that, possibly. I haven't heard back on the.
Any news about the throughway direct route?
Have I, any news about that? No. I mean, I haven't heard back. That is part of the scope, and I have not heard back. I actually reached out, Phil Beerley's still in town, so I reached out to Phil Friday afternoon, actually, Thursday afternoon.
It seems as though the left-hand turn from 299 going west, you have limited stacking ability there, because you have the left turn from 299 going east onto North Ohioville. So you have limited, I would say, I doubt if you have six car lengths there, you know, so that seems like it's a little bit of a prob, I mean, for Parity's lane right now, obviously, there's no traffic unless there's yoga class or something, you know, so. Well, Dave's.
I think there's actually three, there's a spot for three.
Three, is there?
It's tight.
Amy, Adele, Amy, Tom, thoughts?
If anybody would like to see the site, and contact Steve directly, he's always offered to cover the business, the facility, kind of see the operation he has, and he'll do that as well.
At Rocking Horse Ranch.
We got rocking.
Our new dining area is finally open, so.
You can do a two for one.
There's two new board members, and I'm just wondering if they might like the 30-second overview of the project itself?
Yes.
Well, I came to the original presentation, so I feel, I feel somewhat familiar.
So we'll leave it up to the planning board as far as the site visits. Any board member is welcome to always contact Steve about looking at the way that water is treated and recycled at Rocking Horse Ranch. He's got some state-of-the-art developments in that regard there. If the board wants to conduct a more formal site visit, once the weather gets better and we can do some staking out of things, or give some real dimension in the field to the proposed development areas, we're certainly happy to do that also.
I think it would be helpful if we waited till spring and did get some flags out there to define things a little bit, because it's difficult to.
I think we could orient ourselves better when it was necessary. So, as Ross said, we're targeting end of the first quarter for submitting the DEIS if things go well in our continued preparation of it. But as we go along, there probably will be one or more times when we're back, just to give you an update as to how things are going.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks for your time, we appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Hello. I'm the resident at 48 Cedar Ridge, and I'm here to discuss Route 208 project with LP Builders. And my attorney, Dean Garrison, John Lyons, and John Zask, if he might speak first, we might have some comments afterwards.
Okay, great. I'm going to sit if you don't mind, even though we don't plan on staying long, so don't worry. What I wanted to do this evening was to follow up on some of the comments that we brought to your attention at the last public hearing. And one of the things that's changed since then is that you have received from the Environmental Conservation Board, copied their decision, making a negative recommendation with regard to the issuance of a steep slopes permit with this subdivision as is presently proposed. And I wanted to take a couple of minutes tonight to talk a little bit about that and to build a little bit on some of the information that was presented to you by the Environmental Conservation Board as part of its decision. I'm not going to take you through everything. The board voted seven to zero in support of their decision for a negative recommendation. And I know that they, they crunched a lot of material when they were making their decision. And one of the things that they did, which came to our attention when we read the decision, is that they reached out, I'm talking about the R-Tank system, which has been proposed by the applicant as a component of their stormwater management system. And the ENCB reached out to the manufacturer of this system. And they were prompted to do that by the comments which we had made at the first session of the public hearing about the fact that there's a pretty complex infrastructure that's being proposed for getting rid of the stormwater, managing stormwater for this two-lot subdivision, and that no provision has been made in the proposed plan for how this infrastructure is going to be maintained on an ongoing basis. And we pointed out that there's, it's really necessary to maintain that infrastructure if it can be expected to perform as represented by the applicant. And, and some kind of assurance needs to be made for that maintenance over the long term, not just the next couple of years. So. So the ENCB was aware of that comment, and they actually reached out to the manufacturer of the tank system and obtained, and talked to them about what kind of maintenance was required. And you'll see a note in the ENCB decision saying that this system really requires annual maintenance in order to perform properly. And we took that a step further after getting the decision. And we actually obtained the specs that are issued by the manufacturer of that system. And we're going to be providing you all with copies of that tonight. And this will give you some of the detail on what's required to keep the system maintained. And one of the interesting things that you'll find in this is that you may recall that at the first session of the public hearing, John Bodendorf, who's our consulting engineer, talked about the difficulty in being able to get to this infrastructure, which is located downgrade and behind the sites of the proposed homes, how you would get the kind of equipment down there that would be necessary to conduct this maintenance. And the technical material that's been provided by the manufacturer indicates that this system really needs to be back flushed in order to be properly maintained. And John Bodendorf tells us that that would require getting a significant vehicle or truck down in the back to be able to perform that function. And another issue was raised also about what happens to the wastewater from the back flushing. And, you know, it can't really be just flushed down the hill. So these are things that sort of play into the issues which we raised about a real, our position's a complete lack of thought that's been given to these issues by the applicant. So I'm going to be giving you a letter tonight, which has some other comments from us, but it has a copy of these, a copy of the ENCB decision attached to it, and also a copy of these specs. And if you have any other questions, I'd say you can have your consultants get in touch with us. The other thing that I just wanted to sort of remind you all about, something that you already know, but New Pulse was so concerned about steep slopes and protecting steep slopes that you decided to enact a separate article as part of your zoning law to try to achieve their protection. And you'll see in my letter, I've just made reference to the purpose clause from that section of your zoning law, which kind of explains what the town's trying to achieve by having that. And also reminding you that there are 10, or nine or 10 reasons that are laid out by the town as a rationale for that section, talking about why it's important to protect steep slopes. And also, in a couple of those sections, making reference to the fact that New Pulse has learned, sort of, they don't use these words, but learned the hard way, that a failure to protect these slopes can really add and cause a significant number of problems. I think that the exact language in the statute is that, from past experience, we have learned that. So it's an important issue for the town. It's certainly a very important issue for my clients who are at 28 and 30 Cedar Ridge Road, right at the bottom of this proposed project. And I would just say that, in closing, that the ENCB, the last comment that they made in their decision was that they just don't think that the criteria that set forth in Article 15 of your zoning law on steep slopes can be met with this subdivision as proposed. And we agree with that. We were very gratified to get this decision from the ENCB. That is, their comments are a validation of the issues that we've raised. You may recall, at the first session, I mentioned, this is not a NIMBY situation. I think that the ENCB's validation of the issues that we've raised proves that. So we would ask you to please take the steep slopes permit component of this very seriously. We'd ask you to please take very seriously the recommendation of the ENCB. We agree with it, and we would like you to deny the steep slopes permit for the same reasons that are set forth in that decision. Thank you very much for your patience.
You'll please submit a copy of that as well to the applicant?
Yes, yep, as we agreed. Although the applicant hasn't really, we haven't really enjoyed mutual, we haven't enjoyed a mutual success in that arrangement, but we will do that. And this is a letter that talks about the ENCB decision. As I said, a copy of the decision is attached, and also those specs from the RTAN manufacturer. I noticed your chairman's not here today, and I'll leave you to tell your copy of the letter with her.
If you are aware that the applicant has said the hearing be continued to February 9th?
Yes, yep.
Discussion happening?
Thank you for reminding us.
Anything else?
Yes, sir. After our last meeting on December 24th, or our last meeting presentation, but before the ENCB meeting, I did a little more research. And one of the areas that I explored was the United States Department of Agriculture Soil Survey map. And this is as of September 2014, the most recent review of the maps. And what they look at are, in the soil survey, is to look for the suitability and limitations in use of any parcel of land. Anything you zone in on an area that you highlight, they'll review that and give you feedback on that. So it helps with building site development. It refers to how soil features impact the use of the proposed land, proposed development. And they give ranges of suitability, going from not limited, which indicates that soil has features that are very favorable for the specified, good performance and very low performance can be expect, I'm sorry, good performance and very low maintenance can be expected. The worst end of the range is very limited, which indicates that the soil has one or more features that are unfavorable for the specified use. The limitations generally cannot be overcome without major soil reclamation, special design, or expensive installation procedures. Poor performance and high maintenance can be expected. The areas that I think, that I'd like you to look at are pages 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, that refer to buildings with basements. And the summation, looking at all the variables that they look at, are that the soil for building, including a basement, is very limited. So it's the worst category for both, for the two types of soil subsets that are on the hillside where buildings are posed. The other area that is of critical significance is page 24, 25, 26, where they look at septic suitability. And septic suitability is also very limited, meaning it is the lowest in classification where one can tend to build. And it's likely to fail, and it can be poor performance and high maintenance. And I'm going to leave a copy of this as well.
And the ENCB, as one of the aspects of their decision, is that they also raise some questions about the PERC tests that have already been done on this site, and the sufficiency of those PERC tests. And that's something that sort of just plays right into what Eric's talking about.
I mean, knowing this, I'm not sure how PERC test, or how they're health, because of approved, knowing the limitations on this. If anybody wants to have this emailed to them, I'll be happy to do that. Or let me see what copy here.
All right. I'd like to get it emailed to me.
You can email us. I'll be happy to do it.
Give a copy to the secretary for...
Yeah, yes.
Anyone else have any other questions for us? What's the soil type there that you referred to? What's the type of soil?
The types of soil?
Yeah.
It's bath and Nassau soil. It's better explained right here.
Okay. I'll read it by me again.
Yeah. It's bath, Nassau, and Louisiana, I believe. Nassau, bath, and bath, Nassau. And in the interest of disclosure, folks, my computer skills are somewhat limited, and I tried to draw out what I thought was their property, extending from south of the VFW to just north of 109, 208, 109 Route 208. So I got the north and south borders, and I got the eastern border, because that's the highway. On the western border, I just could not make the cursor do everything I wanted. So it shows 3.5 acres, which really, 2.0 acres is involved. It's easy to see where that property would be if it was one-third less.
Nassau, bath soils are the most common soils in New Pulse. It's not a surprise.
Yeah. And they go on to comment about depth permeability, and they demonstrate shovel permeability throughout the upper part and the lower parts of their property.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Any other public comment? Like a motion to close the public hearing for tonight, and we will reopen on February 9th. Is there a second?
One second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. So everyone should be keeping in mind items that they would like to discuss at a workshop meeting. Our next meeting is a workshop meeting for us to discuss internal and other issues.
Dave, just as a follow-up on that, Dave and I have had a discussion about some stuff we could do as trade topics for you. So here's my suggestion, with Dave's position. So let us know if any of those are of particular interest, if they're of interest, and we'll see what we can work with you guys to do.
That sounds great. Why didn't you do this three years ago?
Well, I did it four years ago, I think, but...
Gee, come on.
The time is ever.
Any other business Peter, you want to discuss? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So I just have one question.
Okay.
On the workshop meeting, can you tell me a little bit more of what we're supposed to be looking at to the way the topic...
Really, just the terms indicate that you're more focused on the internal procedural stuff of the board than formally reviewing the options. If there's something that comes up, I think Mike would like to deal with, like, one-offs, but not to necessarily go through a detailed plan, maybe you like helping out.
Kelly, are you keeping a list of things for that meeting?
No, I think Mike wanted you guys to build up some kind of a list tonight, so that I could, I have your first suggestion. Any other suggestions, I'll write it down. As of today's training.
I'm going to email you some stuff. I just have to think about it, because that'd be better.
Everybody's just emailing me ideas together on this.
Motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Waiting for someone to say no.